Back to you.
Yeah.
Thanks. So it is six thirty, it is June tenth, believe that? Zoom in, bye.
I'm so warm, I can't believe it.
The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during our meetings. We ask all members to interact and play an earner, even when we do this. We value the participation of our community and want all participants to be marginalized, minoritized, needed, well-looked, and respected. We ask our committee members and whoever participates to commit to these standards, support, and respect our community. With that, the motion to call the meeting to work and accept the agenda.
Don't move.
Mr. Gilmore, second.
Second.
Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We are very lucky to have two new, very well-accomplished members to the board tonight. We have Dr. Niko Athanasio, and Brayce Schlegel. For folks who may or may not know, here is something I find fascinating, is that both folks up here have dedicated their professional lives before coming up here to helping others. They're both big people who sometimes are hurting, who sometimes are in pain, and they try to relieve that. They've dedicated themselves, understanding that part of their job is to make sure that people are well-treated and cared about. To me, it's a fascinating perspective to see people in that state, and I can't speak for a real question, but I think it's a fascinating way for you to kind of approach that. So thank you for stepping forward and doing this, we cannot wait to work with over here, it's going to be exciting, and it'll be, there's a lot to do. So it's good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
That's.
I want to say one other thing.
Oh, please.
I am also very happy to have two folks that have businesses in Citrus. And I think that's of note, that eagles have businesses, that haven't had businesses in Citrus in a while, and I appreciate that perspective. You're welcome.
Mr. General, you're welcome. Glad you're on board.
It's being a new, being a new year, we're going to have a board reorganization, and so we'll start with a chair. We have anyone to make a motion to nominate someone for chair?
I would like to nominate Andrew Vigridj as the Select Board Chair, to continue.
Second, a discussion, or none?
Could I just say something?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, because you're going to be in your second year, you're in full stride, the learning curve has already occurred, and I think you'll be a good, strong complement to this board this year. And I think we're going to need that going into this conference this year. You have my, my full agreement.
Very much so. I appreciate that, thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. We're going to go to Vice Chair, and I'm going to actually have one to nominate, Ms. Harrison for Vice Chair. Again, I think folks should all sort of realize a couple of things. One, Susan's fantastic, and she's super smart, and has a team that can go up running with her. People also need to realize this is probably one of the youngest boards. A lot of experience, and so we're, and this is, we're in big time, so we, I think there's a lot of, besides also being fabulous, some consistency as we kind of go forward, there's a lot of new folks that are better on here, that might make a lot of sense of others. Do you not agree with that, I think was the, also the part that you called it?
Yes.
Yes. We have a second, second, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. And going with the theme, we're going to go with clerk on consistency. I'd like to nominate Mr. Gilmore as clerk. We'd like to play a video.
I was going to say that, that you, like, head and shoulders above everyone, like for a brief car promotion.
Oh, for the Karen's?
Oh.
And again, besides being out in town, knowing what's happening and everything, again, this is part of the, we get to this for committees, this part, I'd help us do is to make sure that you're around all the committees that are there, there's a different focus that they are. But Jamie's done a fabulous job here, and also, so we can do this, so we have a second for Mr. Gilmore.
Second.
Schlegel, I say. All in favor?
Aye.
All in unanimous. We reorganize the board. Any reorganization? No disorganization, there's no disorganization, so there we go. With that, are there any walk-ins or zoom-ins? I see none. With that, we will go with the report of the Town Administrator.
Good evening, thank you. We'll start a lot of usage update, track track coupon, and reservoir pull at plus seven, last week they were plus three point five. Rainfall the last seven weeks, about seven days, the plant was zero, average daily demand was one point five three one million gallons a day, up from last week's one point six six seven million gallons a day. We are in our outdoor watering van, this is an annual van put on by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, based on our draws in our aquifer basin, between May first and September thirtieth. Automatic irrigation system, mainly to use one day per week, as designated by your voting precinct. Go to the frequently asked questions, outdoor water use, at the Water Resource Commission page on the Town website. Also, if you are watering your grass, outdoor watering must take place before nine AM and after five PM, three dollars, that's the thirty. Just an update for people, next Thursday, June nineteenth, the Town Hall will be closed for the State Holiday, and Juneteenth. In addition, the Town Hall will be closed on Friday, June twentieth. City's department will begin the replacement of the tiles in the hallway. Thursday, we work to take two days, the Town Hall employees will have training sessions at the library on Friday, so Town Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday of next week. Reminder, beach stickers are not required, all parking, all town beaches, the bathroom trail at Egypt Beach, we'll talk about that a little bit later, so we won't touch on that. Lifeguard staff begins Wednesday, June eighteenth, the week from tomorrow. Lifeguard training will take place next Thursday at Peggy Beach, starting at approximately one thirty. Training involves various scenarios, including a wife rescue, and involves a hop, master, situa, police, and fight assignments. So next Thursday, Tuesday afternoon, we will see a lot of activity at the beach, there is the lifeguard training. If people need a beach wheelchair, beach wheelchairs are available to sign up, starting on June eighteenth, September first, from eight AM to five PM. Egypt, Peggy, and how our chairs are on site, mine is located at the Rec Department and requires transportation. Before usage, contact the Rec Department, chairs must be signed out, the Rec Base Department, person over the phone, waiver form must be completed, and a copy of the valid government issued ID must be presented. This Saturday, June fourteenth, rain or shine, is Citrus Community Shred Day. This is a free shredding day, safely and securely dispose of your confidential documents in the onsite Iron Mountain Government compliant mobile shredding truck. This event is free for Citrus residents and homeowners. Businesses shredding will have a fee of fifty dollars for less than five bags of boxes, a hundred dollars for six to ten bags of boxes, two hundred dollars for eleven to twenty bags of boxes, three hundred dollars for twenty one bags of boxes, as long as they're max. Our money, our food collecting will be donated to the Citrus Food Pantry. This is thanks due to George Jamison and Ellie Drobridge of Callow Bank and Realty. They're sponsoring this event, they've done it for a couple of years, and Noel is wildly successful, so if you have document, or tax returns, things like that, that you need to get rid of, it's great to do it. The Oceanside C-Wall Replacement Project started ramping up today, the contractor started driving the sheets, there'll be one sheet inbound of the wall, one sheet outbound of the wall, they started taking that wall down. That project is scheduled to last through the end of the calendar year. This is different than the C-Wall Project on a turnover, which is just a repair, that is scheduled to be done sometime before the end of this month. Good news this week, I know everybody's happy, the Jericho Boat Ramp is officially open. Still want to thank Terry Smith, the Acting Director of the Office of Fish and Boating Access, and his staff, the contractor, Tuckett Asphalt, the Rhode Island, to complete the project in time we may have. They are about a week and a half early on getting that done. The improvements to the boat ramp and parking area will make it easier for boaters to launch when we cover their vessels, make the area more accessible, and enjoy the boaters and non-boaters alike. Please be advised, there may be minor disruptions at the boat ramp as the contractor finishes the lighting, it's a punch aside, but the boat ramp is open. I went down Friday afternoon, was taking the sawhorses off one gate, by the time I walked down, I got the sawhorses off the other entryway, there were already two guys putting their boats, so people looking for it, they're glad to see it. Finally, just to remind you, we are doing gas work on Jericho Road, we just brought down the gas main, once they're finished that, they'll come back, start doing the service. So use caution or avoid dang it, that's what I have conceded.
Thank you. Other questions?
Jim, could you review the hours of the shred day again?
Sure.
Thank you.
Shred day will be Saturday from nine AM to twelve PM.
Thank you.
Well, I have two questions, they're completely unrelated. The first one is, what happened on Harbor this morning? I know they were doing work overnight with the water, and there was a lot of complaints with groundwater on Allen Place, and those residents said they had not been notified. I guess some people got reverse nine-one-one calls, but they did not.
So the water shut off was for the Conway Building, that's the public children impact, it was the Conway Building that we had placed, and that's why they were noticed, because their water was actually being shut off. The groundwater may or may not have been related to that project.
I didn't get any calls about groundwater, and it wasn't a, how can I say? There was a water line that broke in the Conway Building, and the gate was not working to shut the water off, so they did repairs to the gate, that stuff.
So we notified those residents who are losing their water, starting at about two o'clock, what, those building place, and that building.
So my friend on Allen woke up at two o'clock in the morning because the water was making noise?
And should be too far away to be related to that, but we can check. Should only have been related to that by Allen Place, it's two blocks further than that, so I think that they would have a problem to go to her, call her, all people between, but we can check. I haven't yet, that's what the DPD, I mean, they'll see.
Right, I definitely think people were calling the Water Department today. And my second question is, there's a lot of protests scheduled on Saturday, and there's been a lot of activity at the Rotary up late with protests. Is there any way we can get people to protest at Town Hall instead? Because I feel like the Rotary is so incredibly dangerous.
We can't tell them where they can protest. We did have someone call before, we suggested they use the Town Hall, as opposed to the Rotary, but we can't tell them. The police will be down, and make sure they're out of the way, and make sure they're not blocking traffic, things like that, but we can't tell them where they can't protest.
Thank you.
All right, Uncle?
Yeah?
Anyone? Okay. Great, we will go to our, to our seven o'clock, we have interviews with boards and committees, so we're going to start with conservation, and so we'll watch if, we have both Roger and Robbie, both here, come on up, both, come on up. Maybe you have one.
Good evening.
So usually how we do these, it's, because we're usually the same sort of questions we can ask, so we'll ask them upfront. Why, why now, and just tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll go through the questions.
Sure, well, appreciate the opportunity, I'm glad I have the opportunity to kind of volunteer for this committee, it's something that I feel passionate about. Why am I interested in being considered for this role? One is, I really appreciate the idea, as an avid outdoors person, entire life I've come to appreciate the beauty of wetlands and the environment. I moved to Citrus about twenty-five years ago, and I've just fallen in love with the way, way, this way, with the wetlands, with the forests, with the green space. And I am on the water fifty-plus times a year, going through the North River, going through the South River, paddling the Gulf, and then with my paddleboard. And I'm at the point in my life where my kids are older, I'm a little bit more advanced in my career, say I'm seasoned, I'm not saying I'm old, but I'm advanced in my career, and I'm at the point where I have the ability and the time to make the commitment that I think is important for this town. I look at this as a way to protect what Citrus is, and what lands that exist out there today. I've watched it grow over the last twenty-five years, and I think there's an opportunity for us to maintain, monitor what we have been, look at where we are today, and really look to where we want to be in the future. I do think, with my kids growing up in this town, spending twenty-five years here in the town, there are some special areas of this town that are associated with the wetlands, and I want to help preserve those in a balanced section about not, without impeding progress, but making sure that we're doing any things for the right reasons, rather than just kind of, just kind of maintaining the status quo. I am a healthcare executive, I've been dealing with healthcare industry for twenty-plus years. My, I have a history of navigating complex environments, health systems, we go down and get health system environment, but, and tons of regulations, tons of requirements, and being able to kind of navigate our customers, or my customers, to the right answer, not an answer, but a right answer for the benefit of their organization, to make sure that we're compliant. Federal regulations, regional regulations, as well as the health systems required in, say, policies and procedures. It also means not always telling people what they want to hear. Sometimes it's about sharing information with them that people don't like, and I have a history of kind of being able to bring cross-functional teams together, to kind of work together on solutions, and using things proactively versus reactively, kind of reacting to things after they happen. So one of the things that I really would look to do, and what's made me successful in my career, is really working to understand, getting input from other folks, cross-functional teams, collaborations with other areas that may not be in my direct area of expertise or oversight, but using that to learn about processes, learn about what complications may be, and then taking those and helping provide informed decision, or help guide the, what I call, partnership approach. And so conservation of this town's wetlands, utmost important to me, I think it's important, it's what makes the town special, and to be considered a candidate for this opportunity, it's, I'm a voluntary for a position like this, but like I said, my, at the point in my life, I have the ability to make the commitment, and I do recognize this a bit, because it is going to require a three-year investment. I'm not doing this to build a resume, I'm not in the industry, I'm not looking to build a network related to this, it's just a guy who loves the environment and wants to preserve what's unique, what's special, and work collaboratively with authorities, people in the town, to teach them about it. I think that's the other aspect about it, a lot of things I'm seeing, I haven't read all the minutes, I haven't watched all the videos, but a lot of things I see in the Conservation Committee is about building and replacing and doing that, I think there's an opportunity for this, for this town to really look at things proactively, and really look at things to educate the community on this stuff, versus just building and repairing, what can we do to preserve, and educate people so that when things happen, it's not necessarily surprise.
We have some of the savvy people in this town, wonderful resumes, I just, real quick, did Robby?
I'm Robbie.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So you're Roger.
I am Roger.
I was confused.
Yes, just wanted to make sure.
I'm Roger, Roger from Eighteen Village Lane.
I will, and I'll bring up questions. Sure.
So, I love the idea of being proactive, thanks for coming, and thanks for sponsoring for the contest. I guess I have one question, one comment. The, as far as being able to find time later in career to volunteer in a different way, and being ready for the first time, speaking of myself, I've been here about seven minutes, so that's great. I love that you're eager to take part in the community, and be an active seeker of making this community a better place, so I love that. I think with being proactive, you mentioned teaching, I think that one of the ways that the commission probably benefits from somebody who's interested in putting some conservation education on the table, and finding ways to involve more people in town to get involved in their own conservation of the area is great, so that the work doesn't fall on less hands. It's kind of like the recycling, if everybody's adding a little bit, it makes a huge impact, so, so I would support that fully. And I think that there's value in the fact that you don't seem to have any agenda. I think conservation is a resource that affects every single person in the community in all sorts of different ways, but it really affects everyone. Everybody's got a role to play in its survivability, so I think not coming to the table with some specific agenda is also important to me. I guess the only question I would have, maybe specifically, in terms of talking about teamwork, obviously, there are certain things with Conservation Commission that don't have a huge amount of control over at all times, all the point to forty Bs, which regularly go around the town's bushes. But a lot of times, we do have control, we do have some impact as a commission, but often, it's a question of the butters. My experience, direct butters and indirect butters to a conservation impact project are the ones that are going to have the most head-to-head discussion, or sometimes disagreement. You know, when you run into that situation in your previous fields, how do you try to approach a situation where there is conflict?
Great question, something I deal with on a daily basis. In my experience, I work with large medical physician organizations, I work toward organizations, national groups, and rarely do all the stakeholders have the same agenda, same priorities, same needs. And the way that I've been successful there is engaging each of those, giving each of those folks voice, to make them feel that they're part of the process, versus being brought along with the process, and advocating for the individuals at different levels, when they should be advocating, right? And it's bringing people along in the process, you talked about the butters and stuff like that. It's really about kind of going out there and making sure that people have a voice to talk about what's important to them, and that when a decision's made, not to make a decision, but make sure that you're explaining it in a way, or providing the results in it, in a way that they understand. And a lot of days, I'll be honest with you, I have to make a decision about something, about one of my customers, about my team, I know I'm not going to make somebody happy today, sometimes, you know, with stuff like the one in the house, but most of the time, it's like, you know you have to do it for the right reasons, and if you do it in the right way, it makes it better. They're not always going to be happy with decisions, but giving them an opportunity to be part of the process, and voicing the process, and getting back to that proactive education, is letting people know why we're doing these things, like, there's a reason we're doing this. It's not just because we're doing it today, but getting out into the community, I'll be the first to tell you, years ago, I didn't know what was, right? And it could have been partially because I was so focused on my family and my job, there's got to be a better way to get out there and share education programs, be a little bit more visible about it, so that when there are situations that you brought up, ops where there are people who disagree with plans, we address those, and it's not a myth, so, I think regulations have to do with that.
I have a couple, really not a couple, but I see your resume as quite impressive. This is certainly within your cake and building, I think. Are you still with the Chicago-Illinois group?
Yes.
How often do you go to Chicago?
Maybe once every two months.
So that's not going to conflict with the meetings?
No, I will tell you, when COVID hit, it took me off the road, and a lot of things, when virtual, it moved everybody in the right direction. I do do travel periodically, fortunate enough to have to go to Zula, Montana next week, so, but that's, that was all the travel tourism.
Have you been to a Conservation Commission meeting, one or two, or?
I have not. I've listened to them, I've read the minutes, I have, which was based on my comment, where those people were talking about placing septic systems, actually, let me force for a sec, I did go to a Conservation Committee session in Denham. When I was at Denham Medical, I was responsible for a project that was related to repairing some of the grounds and the parking lot, and we had to go in front of the Town Conservation Committee to talk about the plan and the experience there, and that was a very.
That'll go.
We got it, there were a lot of things we needed to do.
Yeah.
You know, we, we got it, and my boss was happy, so that was fun.
Thank you, sure.
I don't really have a question, you've answered all my questions, I just want a statement about, the Conservation Commission is super important, as you know, they meet twice a month, so it's a, it is a larger commitment committee, they're an incredibly dedicated group, and they need people that'll, like, do the work. So I thank you for your answers, because it sounds like you will help them do the work.
I don't, I'm.
I do, yeah, I do think. They need some extra hands.
Yes.
Because they not only do the, you know, Google, whether you're talking about building or septic or whatever, but they also help to maintain all the lands in town, all the conservation lands, as you know, it's quite a big.
Quite a lot of space in this town.
Beautiful space, it's the best space in town. So thank you for your answer.
Thank you. Well, thank you, we still, it's more than anything.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Josh.
Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, next, for community preservation.
Right here? Yes.
Oh, Robbie, all right.
Good time.
Come on up. All right, we'll stick with conservation. Where are you?
I'm doing well.
Typically ask the same questions, so I'll just ask them at the start, so just quick background on yourself, kind of why now, and why you want to join, so, why at the time, and why in general?
Sure, so I'll start a little bit about myself, I've been in Citrus for about, sorry, eight years, so I'm here for a while. My kids are getting older, so I find myself with more time. I understand the volunteer nature of some of these boards, and the importance, you know, for community members to participate in, you know, having government. So my background is in civil engineering, I've been a licensed professional engineer for about twenty years, been doing civil engineering for about twenty-five years in Boston. I have a lot of experience in site development, and in permitting, and site design, areas that are adjacent to the Conservation Commission's kind of purview. You know, I've prepared stormwater pollution prevention plans, NFTs permits, familiar with orders, conditions, and terminations, applicability. You know, some of those related activities that are part of the conservation. And I feel like I can be effective in that position because of my experience in civil engineering and in environmental type site development. I've been on zoning bylaw committee when I was in the halls, so I understand kind of how committees work. Familiar with Roger Hughes, you know, open meeting law, kind of the need to reach consensus and negotiate and be reasonable, you know, apply reasonable decision-making process, or important, you know, important topics to both residents and the town. Yeah, so I think I can be effective in the position, and, you know, want to help, and have some experience with boards, and a lot of experience in schools, we bring, so I think it would be good.
Well, thank you for stepping forward, and fabulous. So here's a question, it's from over here.
Well, I just comment further, your resume is extraordinary.
Thank you.
We are such a lucky town, to have people with great knowledge, and I think you would be a great compliment, just looking at your resume, and I appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you, appreciate the kind words.
All right, thanks for coming, Robbie, and a couple of questions. I, first of all, think your resume is fantastic, I think that it speaks to the fact that you've been in town for a little while, and you've been part of the community, and now you're stepping up to try and be active on other bigger committees. I think Susan asked this question earlier. I think Susan asked this question earlier, if you're a candidate, do you feel, the conservation commission is a sort of a heavy-hitting committee in town, they do a lot and it's a lot of work. Do you feel like you have enough, you mentioned having more time, I literally understand that that's sort of one of the reasons I decided in this, when in my career, to show up this direction. Do you feel like you have a good feel for the balance you're going to need to have? Do you do those things together?
Yes, I do. I've considered and spoke with my wife about it. I feel like I understand what the workload will be in terms of reviewing applications and attending meetings and potentially site visits with conservation agent. You know, I work hard time in the, part of the time in the city, a lot of the time from home office, so I'm, you know, I'm in the area more than I'm not, so. You know, I feel like
The other question I had was in terms of, you know, just having started on the select board. One of the things I just recently did a few days ago was all our ethics training off of the Ventress Law. Being a civil engineer, having worked a lot around the whole area, do you feel like there are any outsized conflicts that would present themselves if you were on a conservation commission? Have you worked on projects in Situate or very close to Situate, do you associate with them recently?
I know the firm that I work for has done work in Situate, but I was not part of that work. And I think if there was a conflict, I could certainly acknowledge that and accuse myself of, if necessary.
All right.
Yep.
Great. Thank you again. All those amazing people. Resumes as we go forward, I think there's still, there's another person we were interviewing, so if you can touch with us, this is great.
Sure, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
That's quickening, thank you.
Yeah, try to make a hand. Nice look around volunteer, we want to make it.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
I'll try not to kick over the trash cam on any of you.
Oh, okay.
That was me last time.
Thank you. Now we're on to community preservation. I think we have someone, um, didn't pull up, Felice and Erin here, I saw that. Come on up, we'll get you, come on up.
John.
John, yeah, John. I think John is via Zoom.
I'll give you my resume, which I would like to see with more of it.
Oh, sure. CB.
CB.
Yeah, we just got several more now. CB. All right. So Seth, will John be able to speak when it's, we're going to go down the line, do the same questions and then, what will we get, John? All right. We'll give you a second. We'll start with Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin Brighton.
Same question, I know you heard that.
Yes, okay.
Why now? Let me spell this a little bit about.
Sure. So I'm Erin Brighton. I grew up in the house my dad grew up in here in Situate, so I've been here for quite a while. And now, of course, since I have the way for a while to work, and I'm back, my kids here in Situate. So since returning, I've been, my background in education, oh, very many. But one of the reasons I moved back here to raise my kids here is the community and the trial, and basketball parks, and FBA. And so I grew up in North Situate in Woodville Road, but now I live in San Marcos. And it's, you know, like old school, like, where, like dinnertime, you know, the kids kind of come running. And I feel so lucky to have had, I feel like being away for so long, that's so good. And so, you know, what we have here is so unique. And so my youngest is now, just turned ten. And when I thought about how I, I slept in the schools, I slept in public schools, I got back from the education. And so I was getting more involved with the town that way. And when I saw an opportunity for community preservation commission, I thought that my area of interest, my kid, my history here, my interior.
Okay, hi, thanks. So I believe too, so I'm currently on the advisory committee, but I just, right up there, I want to say my intention is to resign from the advisory committee to show that he's like will CPC, but also to resign anyway this year because it's been seven years and this is my second year as chair. And I think it's time for me to do something else. So just want to get that out there. The resume will just tell you that I was a banker for pretty much, so that was my background. And I became a member of the advisory committee upon retiring, so I really did not part of the committee and worked at the same time community in Boston. But I'm very committed to the town. I was a summer resident, so we said I've seen no resident for since childhood. And a permanent residency in the last twelve years, so knocked down the collar from being both a house to a home. Very committed to the town, love the town, all those things you talked about, all the things that the gentleman before talked about. And while I was on advisory, I was liaison to CPC, so I had the opportunity to attend many of the CPC meetings. And I always, I always liked this, I have to be honest, I always liked CPC, the best of all the presentations and the things that I've listened to on the advisory committee. So I think that particularly now that we have increased population, increased population density, continued pressure on population increases, I think it's extremely important that we have a resource where we can have space dedicated for everyone to use, whether it be for recreation, whether it be store content, whether it be green space. Not to mention the opportunity to help address the problem of housing with the affordable housing component of CPC. So it's something that I would like to be at this, I want to continue helping the town as where I can in my retirement. I hope I continue to serve the town until I die in some capacity, but this is, this is what I think would be the best fit for me in this town.
Thank you. Great, we'll see if John is available. Seth, any thoughts here?
Oh, it's very quiet.
All right, so we will, first of all, well, thank you. You guys start this evening, kind of people, when you have fabulous people, you have to decide, honestly. Questions? Yeah.
So I guess I'll ask a question of both of you, since both of you have been here a while and been part of the town in different ways, living here, being involved. But I think this would apply to both of you in different ways. Do you, when you think of CPC, do you think of public spaces in town, especially the ones that are really available for public use? Do you have a favorite, do you have a favorite project or a favorite place in town that really speaks to you guys?
Well, really.
Good one.
Public space that, I'll say I grew up in North Situate, walked into the tennis courts, for anyone who lives here, I'm a baby. And so I walked to the tennis court in North Situate, which is now a parking lot and playground for kids. And personally, my children were younger, it was kind of wild for me to have that, like you said, it was so important to me as a kid, then turning into a place where I could have my people running around. So that whole day, strong place in my heart, even though my children are all too old for that now. But I would say this is probably that's a place that I was so happy to kind of see become something so special and beneficial and everything I drive through and just see it build with kids. That's one, one of many, but.
I love them all, but I do have a tickle of fondness for Mordecai, I just see the history of it, it's a beautiful property. And the idea that we can go kayaking, I'm a painter, I took a little paint, so it's just, that's my particular thing. But there are others that the committee's been working on for a while that I'd like to see come to a resolution, like if you land around First Foot. McDonald's Farm.
All right. Excellent. All right, John, thank you for that.
John, do you want to join in another way too? We just need you to stop the other audio that you have going on. John, do you hear me?
Gary, consider myself the luckiest.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there we are.
Can you hear me through the call?
Thank you, John. Thank you. So I don't know if you
Sorry, I'm not getting video. I need audio.
Well, we can hear, we see you, you look fabulous, so we can hear you great, can't hear, can't hear us.
John cannot hear you. Let's, let's, John, so John, well, he can't hear me either. John, do you hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you hear me, because I'm on Zoom. I got nothing there. I can't get the audio to work, sorry.
All right, well, we can, Seth, we can reschedule John for the next meeting. All right. I'm sorry. I tried, we'll go next time. Okay, any further questions? I'm sorry, that was a first call.
No, it's okay, that was my one major question, the reason I asked was that outdoor spaces and public spaces were really important to me as we were talking about earlier, conservation. And, you know, I spent God knows how many hours of purple dinosaur with my kids moving along. And I grew that, it was really tough to move on, but then there are some great places. I actually just toured Mordecai about three weeks ago, the first time, was blown away, for anybody who hasn't been there, and how beautiful it is up there. And how special that place is. So it's important to me that we have people that are dedicated to continuing to find new public spaces that can really be accessible to everybody. Just one thing to say.
Sure.
Felice?
Yes. I would comment, I'm impressed with both of you and hopefully sometime we'll hear from John. From Situate.
Yes.
Right? Felice, I've had the pleasure of working with you on advisory for many years. I will comment to you, I keep detail in follows, so. I would leave with either of these candidates. I have no questions. Thank you.
Again, this is, this really is one of the hardest things to be like, oh.
I would give that for sure.
Fabulous people.
One opening.
Open.
It's one.
Yeah. Look, how do we, thank you. Thank you, we'll get in touch, we have to talk to John at some point, we'll let you know. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
No. All right.
All right.
Seth?
I don't have audio, I'm sorry.
Seth, can you? Can you type something, Seth?
Did you tell him we'll reschedule?
Yes, how can I help you? So John is calling by his phone, but his video comes through the computer, so that's why you're getting all that feedback. But now, because John does not have his phone on, he can't hear you, but you can see him.
Can he read, like, can you type something to say we'll reschedule?
Yes.
In the chat?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, we must have his number, okay?
We have it here.
Yeah. All right, council on aging. We have Bethany and Hannah. Come on up, how are you?
How are you?
You know, I failed to ask fellow one. I've done it enough over a year, I'm supposed to stay at the right house. And I'm always, I forget all the time.
I didn't even notice.
I do, I fail. You have them, we'll put them in the notes.
Yeah. We definitely need their names.
Okay, name and age. So same question, name and address. Why and why now? What should we do, Rory?
Thank you, I'm fine, thank you. Just want to thank everyone for your time this evening, at least the rain has stopped. My name is Anna Morris, I've lived here thirty-two years. I live in my husband's family's house, yeah, pretty well-known here in Situate. His mother is Winnie Morris, who started the garden club here. And my husband is Bill Morris, who has a local business, mostly at Morse College, he's been designing. And he volunteers a lot for the town during storms, evacuates, picks up dogs, cats. Of one of his life's, you know, by the right house, he gets them up. So the Morris family is very dedicated here, here in Situate. I work in the healthcare. I recently started a national hospital in the audio vascular department. And I've, they subdivided, and I still went with vascular surgery. And I set up offices there for the vascular department and did the budget and hiring, firing. I also was the main contact for international patients, because we had a lot of patients from Saudi Arabia, Scotland and England. We all had a fellowship that programmed in England at St. Thomas's Hospital. And then I moved on to the commute, it was twenty hours a week, so I decided that was a little too much to commute. With my family growing, and I remember now I work at the old Jordan Hospital in Plymouth that just came with BI, baby health. And there I was a business manager for the cancer center. And I was also the administrator at the cancer center, the outpatient cancer center. And there I did the budget, the finances, hiring, you know, firing, we had two unions, I learned all about unions there. We had SEIU and MNA, and we also had the housekeeping union and also the security unions. We had four unions in the hospital. So someplace I never worked before, you know, but it was fine, learned the rules very fast. And there I was an advocate for the cancer patients, most of them, you know, we have them from, I would say, mid-thirties to all the way up to nineties. And I worked with the seniors there, because many of them, you know, they didn't have family or they needed someone to advocate for them, for resources when they went home, if they were inpatient, you have to find when you're inpatient rehab or still nursing home or inpatient. But then when you go home, you're pretty much on your own. So I advocated for them and I volunteered and worked with Joe Indruzy Foundation. And Joe Indruzy Foundation, does he have cancer? He gave a lot to the cancer center and he came in periodically and saw all the patients. So it's, you know, the social aspect of seniors also means a lot to their healthcare, besides medical care. And then, most recently, I also worked with Love, Learn Love and Learn Live and Love, that's Rosie and Jim and Herb's Foundation. So I'm a volunteer for them and I help patients with resources regarding financial issues they may be having or with their statements, because the medical billing is so complicated. And so I noted that also, it's very complicated. And then I recently stopped working fifty hours a week and now I work just twenty-four hours a week. And I decided to do something new and to give back what I learned in academic centers to Situate. So I work in the South Shore Hospital now for the Bridge program, which is my addiction program, with all volunteers. Addiction hits every walk of life from homeless all the way up to very wealthy, very VIP. I guess clients, we call them clients. As a volunteer, you are not mandated by the state or by your doctors or by prison or by society, it's a hundred percent volunteer. So the outcome has been really, you know, very positive, because they want to come and they want help. And it's a terrible situation, it affects everyone in the family, generations and society also. So there, we do the resources there, we help them with the resources, with food entries. I recently, with our church, I belong to the FTC condo church down the street. And I worked at Father Bill's and saw what's going on there and the resources that could be used there. And to see exactly what we're dealing with in the South Shore. And I also volunteered at the church on the outreach program, I had two terms there. And I also just got promoted, I'm an usherer of reaver now. So I was very happy about being promoted. So I think it's a great opportunity and the board plays a crucial role in addressing the need, the aging. I don't like to say aging, I like to call seasons, because they're seasons, they're not aging. And they do much more than when my parents were in their sixties and seventies. I would never see my mother in a tracksuit or, you know, jogging or anything, I mean, I would not see that. And so I call them seasons. And so, I call them seasoned population and offering various programs and services and certainly that older adults have access to resources that they need. Never get lost in the system when they're home out of the hospital, sniff or rehab inpatients. They're there. They have housekeeping. They have someone, you know, helping them with their meals. They have case managers. Everyone is there, which is great. When they get home, it's a whole different situation. Sometimes they get lost in the system. And they don't realize there's so many resources out there that they just don't know. I mean, just with the Learn Love and Live from Rosie and Jim, what they do, many people don't even, and they're right here in the community. And they just don't, and then also Joe Andrusi, they don't know even know about his foundation, what he does. So, there's a lot going on. And I would be, you know, I have the experience. I graduated from Harvard University with honors in social sciences and law. I'm also a fellow with the MGNA, which is the business side of the AMA, who paint on HIPAA, the world practices, like in Caribbean, Alaska, and in, you know, West Virginia. Where they don't have, you know, an academic center near there and what resources they can use also. So, I, you know, it's wonderful and you need to work and help the elderly. You really do, all right? I like to call them seasoned, because they're seasoned. And they're a wonderful population. We learn a lot from them, but they need help sometimes. And I get involved seeing what, you know, the senior center, it's truly most amazing. This is their newest program that gets sent out. And it's almost double the size. What they have done is amazing for this community. And the word is that we are going way beyond what Duxbury Sees does. So, the...
Yeah, come on, way better here.
Way better, way, way better. So, they have, you know, the breakfast now for the men's, and they have a book club for the men. It's truly amazing. I've gone to their, you know, wellness programs. I've also sat into their VNA. I met with the Shine Rep. So, there's a lot to do. And just the Shine Rep alone, many people don't even know that there is a Shine Rep, and what is a Shine Rep? And that every senior center has it in the state of Massachusetts. So, I just don't want the seniors to get lost in this. So, I thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
Yeah, we will, we will come back to some questions. Excellent. Thank you. I have, before, I have to, I love the season thing. My son just volunteered with the beat of the patients today. And the woman that was there, she said that, she said, we're all a bunch of little old ladies. So, he goes there, works, comes to the sports team, he goes, these little ladies are so cool.
They are.
Fourteen, a ripple. I'm sorry. So, yes, how are you? Tell us about yourselves and...
I'm Bethany O'Connor. I live at eighty-nine by Ohio. I have a background, like, degrees in gerontology. I've been working with age three since I graduated college or before that. I served as a health aide, and worked at home care, and worked at the health of the health care manager. And for the past eight years, I've worked as a admissions director at, not in that, but a local health school. So, I've discovered that I have a lot of knowledge as family members got older and kind of been... They've kind of been picking people, picked my brain about my knowledge and different things. And I have a lot to offer about, you know, just different things in the aging population. And I'd love to give back to the community and have a little time on my hands. And I work hard now, so.
Wow, open us up now. Questions? Comments? Concerns? Thoughts?
I think, thank you.
Eliminations.
I think you've already expressed, that, sorry, Anna, you've already expressed pretty good knowledge, comprehensive knowledge of what goes out of the senior center and all of that. Have you been to a council on aging yet?
I have not. I did speak with J.D. Miller, so I got a little background. But no, I have not.
Have you worked with J.D. before?
I have not.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I just see your experience is amazing, understanding how an avenue in the system, and I think we will be to go to council.
Understanding that the year of not filling is complicated.
How many positions are open? Yeah, I, I think, in addition to the experience of both of you seem to have one thing that I think that's, that's super valuable when you're dealing with the seasoned population is empathy. Understanding that a lot of people in that population might have fixed incomes, might have fixed living circumstances, challenging family circumstances below them. And so, I think in addition to just having experience to work a system, I think it's important that you find people that really have empathy for that population. So, I think both of you have plenty of experience in that. My other question, I guess, is what is a Shine Rep?
A Shine Rep. A Shine Rep is out of the elderly. They're trained. They're going to be training back in May. They just had the training program. And they help you with your insurances. And so, a lot of the seniors, they have worked for companies before. So, your company, your employer does your health insurance. But now, when you are retired, you no longer work anymore, you're pretty much on your own. And so, this is a big, you know, component of being confused. There's so many insurances out there. There's nothing standard. It's a very complex system. And recently, so what you do is that you make an appointment with the Shine Rep, who's very well-versed, and she's been trained. And I've gone to her myself. I wanted to see what it was like. So, when patients came to me and they were having problems with insurances, I referred them to the Shine Rep in their town, in their, you know, senior center. And what the big thing is right now is pharmacy. Pharmacy is so expensive. In the cancer center, KEYtruda alone, you see the ad all the time on, on, you know, on the TV. KEYtruda alone is twenty-six thousand for one unit. They usually get two units, which is around fifty-three thousand. And they did that every six months in a federal dispute in court. It's truly amazing. It works wonderful, but it's very, very expensive. And you don't have a coverage for it. You have to decide, should I take it and continue living, which it works fabulous? Or I can't afford it. So, you have to find out, you know, in the pharmacy, they, what you do is you put all your prescriptions together. And you put it into like a queue with the Shine Rep. And then the Shine Rep would do her magic and put vitro, quarrying everything. And then all of a sudden, you'll get five options that are good for you and will cover the prescriptions that you have. And I think everyone should go once a year, because your prescriptions change. And so, then you'll know what is covered and what deductible and what copage you do before something, God forbid, happens to you. Cancer or cardiac issues or ALS or any of that, skin cancer, anything. And that's what the Shine Rep does. They help you, probably be like a broker, and, you know, I'm trying to think what to refer it to. They're kind of like a broker that the hospitals and employers use. To see what, what is their best insurance for their clients.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, if, if you have problems, I mean, and then also what happened this year is that since the deductible went down, went from eight thousand dollars down to two thousand dollars. And so, it sounded really good, a good deal. However, the seniors did not realize that since the deductible went down, their monthly payments went up. So, when people want to fix it.
It's complicated.
Yes, it's very complicated. But if you went to the Shine Rep, which I refer all my patients to go to, the Shine Rep explained it to them. So, that there's no surprise. Yes. So, it's just not good when you're not, you know, when you're in that situation and do you have the money for KEYtruda or can you get KEYtruda? So, you, you want to know the knowledge before you get into that situation. Because I think it's very good. And they need more Shine Reps to pursue them, because the senior center keeps exploring.
It's fantastic.
It's fabulous. It's beautiful in there.
Really good problem. It is a good problem.
And to see the seasoned people in their little tracksuits and everything. And the accessories. I love it. I think it's nice.
I'm glad. Appreciate it. Uh, we, so we have two openings. I can bring a motion. All right, so you don't go anywhere. Or who's going to make the motion? We're two openings and two people.
We're very close.
Who we, we're comfortable?
Yes.
All right, very much. We still have to interview other people, who are still back there. But I'd like to make a motion.
Sure, okay. Move to appoint Bethany O'Connor and Anna Morris to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
Mr. Gilmour second, and I'm Miss Harrison. All those in favor? And as unanimous, welcome, welcome to your committee.
Welcome. Back to the... It's so exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, season.
Season.
They have good accessories. They wear very good accessories.
Kind of full of seasoning. All right.
Want to introduce myself to some of the...
I don't have a tablet and a chair. Freya.
Anna. You should sit down and talk to Anna. Do you have a long note thing doing?
No.
No, all right, good.
We revamped that. We revamped that.
No one's going to be able to read that.
Okay, so, June third, the town Situate received competitive bids for bond and note underwriters. Underwriters for ten million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in general obligation for on, anticipating notes. For many operations, but I may refuse, since we have some moving numbers on the board. Forshore protection, femur, new coaching, happily school, sewer facility plan, infiltration and inflow, North City with sewer expansion design. Water main replacements, additional funds for the CPM docks. And with our ten million dollars. And we had five bids. We had the coupon rate at four percent, the net interest cost with the fifty thousand dollars premium receipt. That'll pay for the costs of borrowing money. It's about three point two percent. And then...
You spoke about three point two.
Net interest cost. So, we're still borrowing at a really great rate. Town has a great, you know, reputation out there. We're still my AA plus. Standard for is we did not have to have a review for this particular borrowing, because it was so fast track. And we borrowed a lot, so they don't have to speak to us every time we borrow, which is another feather in our hat, I would say.
The visa we paid over how many years?
Well, right now, it's, it'll come up for a review again at the end of December. So, in December, we'll think about either permanent bonding done or we'll see what the market is. I don't know, but we're going to come with interest rates and everything. But we'll take a look again in December. And either push it out again, ban again, or do a permanent bonding.
Excellent. And so, this is, I guess, about page twenty-seven, you want to look through it. Almost all of these were, these are projects approved, some of them going back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen, especially for some of the sea ball stuff. Other ones for sewer and water are much more recent. Was it, oh, yeah, Water Main. No, the North City, North City Sewers is the most... That I will, again, fabulous job, three point two.
I know, it's awesome.
Question?
I do not have questions.
Motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the votes prepared by bond council to the pound in a form presented to the committee's meeting, which votes, among other things, make the formal award of the notes to the purchaser. Truist Securities and approve the interest rate and maturity and other details of the notes, as determined in the competitive sale held on June third, two thousand twenty-five, shall be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
All right, Mr. Gilmour second. Sarah, all in favor?
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much.
Well done.
Nice meeting you. Welcome to the board, the board of our committee.
Um, all right. Now, we have, we're a little early. Sorry about that. Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for having us. Water treatment class.
Support Eric Lang on the water superintendent because of his family issues.
How are you?
Good for you.
Good. Great, thank you.
We do have the presentation.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Cafferty, do you need me to share the presentation or not?
Please, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood. That's, I thought you said it was ready. Misread it. We will just, there we go.
All right.
Excellent.
Perfect.
You can see.
Yeah. Well, I know, first time meeting, I hope they do. I'm Lauren Hurdle. I'm with Warner, current project manager for the Sterns Meadow Water Treatment Plant update. It was Rob.
Rob, the principal in charge for this project, as well as the North City with sewer expansion project. I'll be sitting here for both presentations. Great committee.
I'm Steve, roughly on the council table.
Kevin Gaff.
I'll sell that. But yes, very, very excited to be able to share an update with you today. So, if you head to the next slide. Agenda, we'll be reviewing project status and construction progress. So, I have a number of photos to share and watch through with you all. Upcoming construction activities that we anticipate. We do want to review a change order request. We'll pass in detail on that. And then we'll wrap it up with our ongoing project coordination that we provide for this project and have, yeah, available, or time for comments and questions. So, give an update on project status today. Reviewing the number of semitals. It is slowing down. So, we have four hundred and ninety semitals that have been closed today. As of today, we have twelve open semitals and we anticipate about thirty semitals remaining. So, we're really, you know, closing out the semitale process of this project. We're also on schedule. So, I have some, let's see, five hundred and sixty-four days till substantial and seven hundred and twenty-eight until final. So, we're still, we're still tracking as we review with the contractor, yeah, critical path, we maintain that. So, we are in a good spot to continue what the state says shown. Also showing the percent progress as of the five thirty-one payment rec. Payment complete is thirty percent, percent by time is twenty-eight point six. And there is a little bump there. And really, what that has to do with this big steel, semitale or seal deliberate. So, there is a little bit of a bump, but that will even out. So, we're not, not concerned that there's, you know, a minor difference between payment percentage and percent by time.
Lauren, can I interrupt you for one second? I just want to explain the semitale process. So, any piece of equipment that is going to be used in the plant, the steel, the nuts and bolts, the bricks, blocks. The contractor submits a semitale and it goes through the engineers. Then they review it to make sure it meets specifications that are required for, and then they give the okay on it. So, four hundred and ninety semitals is, there's a whole lot of semitals that encompasses start with steel, as well as a lot of the equipment that's used in, is thirty one, but contractors aren't in it. And the engineers have twelve, sorry.
Yeah, no.
We've got some new board members that might understand all of, all of them.
No, appreciate that. Yeah. And if there are any questions, if there are some, please feel free to talk. I'm happy to explain more. All right. So, hopefully you can see here, this is a nice strong photo of the site. This was probably taken about a month ago, so there's more progress has taken place. But what's nice about this photo is you can get a sense of where each of the, you know, operating rooms and filters, you know, treatment processes is taking place. So, if you look on this photo here, you'll see on the right side, you have the garage areas, above the garage areas. That's where you'll have the operations room. People will walk in at grade. So, the garage phase will be lower. It grades up. So, then people that would be, you know, visiting, walking, it would be coming in at that operations level. And then we have the labs and control area, pipe gallery, then that's right now, not so depressed in there. And then the filters, you'll see where all the... You'll see where all the disinfection would take place. Um, and then over on the right side, I skipped the, the pump station that's recycling, um, through the water that is being discharged to the sand beds. So. All right, then, uh, yeah, just providing some overview of construction progress to date with photos here. So it has been very happy with site work, concrete work, all the form work, so that's what you're seeing in these photos here. Masonry, so the photo on the bottom, see that we have the masonry starting in the garage area. Um, installation of steel beams, so we'll see some photos of that later. Uh, we have, yeah, preparation of the sand drying beds, like where, uh, backwash waters, uh, disposed of. And then some wetlands replication work has started. So we can run a progress out there. Any questions on this slide?
Any, any surprises or things that do, weather impacted anything, any, uh, you know, the wetlands replication, any concerns, anything, or so far, so good?
So far, so good.
Yeah, worked through the weather pretty well, like the fact that concrete should be wrapping up with concrete this month, and they had a very aggressive, uh, you know, concrete.
They don't leave brands on Saturdays, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say we had a couple of very heavy rainstorms this spring.
True.
And, you know, all the temporary sanitation controls were, were putting, yeah, no issues downstream of the site at all.
Right, okay, good.
Yeah, yes, handling water well.
Cause some of the toughest problems, yeah. Good.
And then, yeah, just a few, uh, photos showing here, so you'll see some electrical conduit. The photo all the way to the left, uh, going towards the electrical room. And then, uh, photo in the middle, kind of take a step back where you can really see all of the, the rebar, the form work, um, of the, the tanks and the walls of this facility. And then to the, the far, uh, right here, showing inside the garage area of the, this lab and, um, also the masonry back in the corner there. So just showing the progress throughout, uh, this, yeah, the photo, you know, all the way to the left, we have, that's where the pipe gallery is, so soon there will be a ton of pipes in there. And as you walk between those tanks will be filled with water. Uh, so a lot of progress there as well. And, yeah, just showing more, more of the, the form work and concrete work. That's, again, has been the, the bulk of the work so far. And on the last photo, you see steel beams are being installed in. Oh, yeah, you go back to, oh, you're good to advance, thank you. Uh, yeah, and then seeing the steel beams that are installed there. So as far as upcoming construction activities, uh, we will finish out the concrete work. Backfilling will continue. Structural steel is going to be the next big push of, uh, yeah, the next like two to three months. And then continued masonry work and to end up with structural. Yeah, very.
And then, just question forward. Well, almost everything, I said pre-purchased, but we're just, you're ahead of time, right? There's, there are, there are, and then tax, but towards a slash this one. Uh, minus, sort of, sorry. Thanks, minus minus, we're in the business. Up to speed, as we get.
This is, no, this is great.
It was a big push. We didn't know that errors were coming, but we, we didn't know that Babel and some of the other requirements, um, were, were coming, so it was a big push to get the project.
You know, valid is a bio-American, build-american provision that this project got out of the bid before that took effect and we're seeing, well, obviously twenty percent or so premium cost for projects that are followed under the pyramid of build-american.
But twenty percent on the material cost of the project had we not satisfied. I'll talk about that slide as well.
Okay, so again, next here, we want to get into our change order request discussion to give you our understanding of where we are to date. So we do have a change order, one that has been previously executed and approved, that has been approved by D E P as well. Um, so that's six thousand dollars, uh, today. So Rob is going to be taking over, talking through change request number two.
So, uh, I'm gonna cover this part of the presentation because, uh, Laura started with the project in October and the work we're about to talk about, the design push, the idea to get it out to bid ahead of some of the, uh, Babel requirements we talked about. I was involved with the project, we had a prior, uh, different project manager on the job. She left the firm, so it turns out Laura, it wasn't fair to have her talk about this piece of it. So, um, uh, to be clear, we, we, we are before you tonight asking, uh, for your approval of change order, uh, number two, which is four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. Recognize that's a lot of money. If we break it down into three categories, as outlined on the slide here. Uh, I do want to be clear that none of these costs, uh, or all of these costs would have been included in the bid uh, had we delayed the bid and, uh, you know, allowed us to, to finalize some things as we move forward. Uh, none of these, uh, none of this is rework. Um, again, these are, uh, nothing has to be undone. We haven't done construction and now has to be cut apart, taken down, uh, put up. So again, these are costs that would have been in the bid, you know, had we changed some things prior bidding. Again, it was some very, uh, very valid, valid reasons to aggressively get this project out the bid. Uh, Steve mentioned one of them. Uh, this project was eligible for a Babel waiver, and it was because the project, uh, the design portion of the project started before May of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, there was a, uh, a waiver to the Babel requirements for projects that started before that time. Um, and that waiver expired, it was either late August or September of two thousand twenty-four. You know, we did this and got this project awarded just before that, so we, uh, were able to maintain the waiver. And again, as Steve mentioned, there was about a twenty percent premium on material costs. It could have been, uh, up to five, six, seven million dollars based on material cost and the escalation that Babel would have, uh, would have put on the project. So the three, the three categories that make up that four hundred and eighty-three thousand are, uh, there was, um, an addition of a floor drain. Uh, there were some electrical and structural steel modifications that were made. Uh, and then a much smaller chunk of that was some RFI clarifications. So, uh, I'll talk about each one of those, and then if you come in with a question, we might as well be, certainly get to answer anything, uh, you might have. So floor drains, uh, issue, um, it comes down to, it was a difference between, in between Woodard and current by firms, uh, code folks are plumbing folks. I'm not a plumbing engineer, um, and, uh, the town person. Now ultimately, uh, the town inspector has jurisdiction, so we are required to put floor drains in the garage. Um, once you put floor drains in the garage, there's a number of other ancillary things you need, such as a tight tank. And that note will likely make sense to you because we're in a very environmentally sensitive area. We have a reservoir right downstream, so anything that were to get into those floor drains, uh, would be captured in the tight tank. We, it's, uh, requires SCADA, supervisory control and data acquisition system. So basically an alarm system, when the tank fills up, folks at the plant will get an alarm. They can hire a, a, a hauler to come in and pump that tank out, keep it updated. So you're not gonna allow any oil that may spill. The reason we didn't feel that floor drains required in the garage is that it's not intended for vehicle storing. There'll be no, no vehicle maintenance in that area, uh, no vehicle washing in that area. Vehicle will not be stored in there. It, it, however, it does allow particular access to store some of the larger pieces of equipment, pipe and other things that the water department's gonna use on, on a daily basis. Um, so we've, uh, worked with the, uh, code official in town, building inspector. Uh, we've come up with a design, Woodard Current did that free of charge, uh, for the town. So we have some skin in the game too. We've come up with a design that, uh, the building inspector, uh, will approve. We've given that to the contractor. Uh, he's provided us a price, both Woodard and current in the O K M, if we do that price, then we feel it is, uh, a fair price. That the three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred includes the tight tank, the electrical and SCADA system that alarms that tank, all of the, the floor drains themselves. We do trench drains, uh, in the doorway area, uh, and then vent piping as required by code. So that's, that's the first and biggest item. Well, we'll go through them all and then. Sure, of course. Um, so the second, um, and again, the, the second and third, I could have bundled together, but they were really resulting from aggressively getting this project out to bid before the Babel requirements, uh, before the Babel requirements were taken effect, or really lose the waiver that you had from the Babel requirements. Um, there, uh, electrical, uh, there's a duct bank that had to be increased in size. There's some wiring, uh, and, and panels, uh, electrical panels inside the plant, which need to be upsized. Uh, when we did our design, we made some assumptions based on the, uh, anticipated equipment semittals that we're gonna get from the contractor. Once you have the, the actual semittals, we look at the calculations, some of the wiring needed to be upsized. So that's the reason for the duct bank, when you talk about an exterior duct bank. You're looking at rebar, you're looking at concrete, you're looking at site work and compaction, all those things. So that's, that's a piece of that. Again, the wiring in the plane is to service up now that we know the actual pieces of equipment that, um, the contractor is using and satisfied our specs. If we had included, say, larger wiring in the original design, the contractor would have been on that, the bid would have been higher. And then if they submitted a different piece of equipment, which of course we also need to make sure they, uh, they meet specification, it would be very difficult to get that money on the increased wiring size back from the contractor. So we went the other way. We were a little less conservative with our wiring design. Now we know the piece of equipment, so we've had to upsize some of that. And the same, uh, is very, uh, very similar story on the steel. Uh, we had to add some, uh, larger footplates for some of the steel, uh, superstructure members. So that's, uh, item number two. Item number three, you know, is a compilation of, of, of quite a few items that sum to thirty-seven, eight. And there were, um, some issues with the sample pumps. Uh, we changed out some of the sample pumps to improve the performance. We had moved the, one of the inlet pipes into the sand drying bed, which required us to move the, uh, the liner for that bed over. You know, we missed that in our design, so that had to be extended to capture that additional, uh, inlet pipe. Um, there was a, uh, or of a structure in stormwater, one of the stormwater basins to regulate the outgoing flow. Um, and then sprinklers in the chemical room were the, those were the major items that went into that thirty-seven thousand. So that's, that's a very high level summary, and I'll answer what I can, uh, regarding one of those things. Uh, I'm just, I'm actually, we'll start there. Oh, yeah, or actually, anyway. So with our contingency, I mean, we don't, anything's perfect, we do ahead of time. You know, we talked about this, of staying on budget, making sure that we're on. Where are we gonna be, um, with our contingency? If we go ahead and, uh, put this.
Yep, um, so the change orders, percentage of the work that's been completed to date is about two and a half percent. Uh, I've got a prefaces and backtrack, just a little bit of a Ken, I don't know, um, in the design process, so we can understand it a little bit. The last piece of design that always gets done is electric. It's all on the key on the suspect, you know, the place the corners get sized. And when we made that decision, we stayed ahead of the battle. These folks didn't get a point, a chance to really have their electrical design completely reviewed, which is why we're seeing some of that hundred and ten number there. There, we have, uh, how many field doors? Twelve field doors? We got twelve field doors last night, check.
Right, yeah.
So we have twelve field doors, and if you go back and dig through all those, early on, there's a bunch of little things happening with electric. Those little things do over time, yeah. Um, with regards to the floor drain, um, that's a big change, but it's a change that we have to do because of how that all fell out. I look at it as.
Wait, wait, I don't understand how that all fell out. Explain that in full sentences. Why do we have to put floor drains now when it wasn't in the design? And why are we thinking we're gonna pull trucks in there now? What, who's telling us to put floor drains in an area where we didn't think we needed floor drains?
So, so during the design, their plumbing engineer spoke with somebody on the state, Boston office, talked about how this was gonna be used, and did we need to put floor drains? Because we're looking to save some costs in the design. We've got to read it, they got to read it. In the course of building, the plumbing inspector comes out and the electrical inspector comes out. At a certain point, they do what's called a rough inspection. They, they approve, roughed in materials. When the plumbing inspector came out, we were ready to pour the floors, bottom base slabs. He looked at, where are the floor drains? And we went back and forth over him. Pointed out that his jurisdiction supersedes anybody else's, engineers and everybody else. And so we said, okay, then I insist on the floor drains, we'll find a solution. We worked around that a little bit, so it's not delay. So it's not to delay the project, because if we delay the project, it's gonna be sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars a day, every day delay. So Woodard Current believed they were doing the right thing. They had some feedback from folks in Boston that at the local level, when we're ready to pour concrete and get sign off on the roughed in plumbing, we could not get approved. We worked around that, found a solution. It's a paranormal work, like.
Talked, was the plumbing inspector not aware of the usage of the area? Was he walking, thinking it's just a garage we're gonna stick trucks in? Was this not explained to him about what the actual purpose of the facility area is? And that there will be no trucks there, so therefore no reason to have drains?
No, there'll be trucks in it. There'll be, there'll be equipment and, and whatnot. We're not doing any maintenance of equipment in there, we're not washing down any equipment. If, if you pull up the plumbing code and read it closely, it, it can be interpreted a couple of different ways. The, the local plumbing inspector would not sign off on the roughing, roughing work we had. So we either have to stop and not pour the concrete and do what we refer to as rework, take things apart that were already in place, re-burden everything else to put the drains beside it. We worked with the plumbing inspector and got him to put in the drains right outside the doors. Because the floor was always smoking, with the doors. Okay?
So can I ask a question about the, so the, this is obviously way above my pay grade in terms of the, the plant facility as a, as a highly technical piece, but, but I have a house. And around my house, part of my house, I have a French drain, which is what I'm assuming is sort of this equivalence at a much higher level to what we're talking about outside the garage.
Right, so.
Collecting, collecting flow as it exits or outside.
Yeah.
And then we're putting it into a tight tank to make sure that it doesn't exit the environmental sphere. If, if that tight tank is also creating some of this initial cost, are there additional costs to processing that tight tank waste? And, I mean, is there incremental cost that's ongoing to the structure that we didn't anticipate?
There will be an, whether the tank was, I mean, the drains were inside the doors or outside the doors, they would have to go to the tight tank. So there is an operating cost to that tight tank down, it's a level element.
But that, that incremental cost over time is, is.
That would be the operating, what's over there?
It's an operating cost.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Um, the other question I have was, I apologize, I forgot.
Rob, sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, you mentioned that the, the, the concept of some of this money being sort of stuck with it because it was part of the price we're essentially paying now for getting ahead of the, the B A B A certifications. I understand that, but when you say that, are you talking about the hundred and ten and thirty-seven? Or are you talking about the floor drains?
The hundred and ten and thirty-seven, sorry if I wasn't clear. The, the floor drain is its own separate thing.
That was purely an inspection.
Correct. Uh, and the other two were, you know, sort of related to accelerating the design.
Yeah, that, that I understand.
So I want to try to come back and answer, give you this question in real time, which is where are we at? I just, I said, okay. So at this point in time, virtually all the concrete is in, it's, you know, same morning call. All the excavation is down there. You're, you're way ahead on here at this point. So the sort of big things that could have caused concerns with costs, a lot of, we're quite far past all this. We're now gonna start seeing steel wall working inside a building. So if you look at the bottom line, the RFI clarifications for thirty-seven thousand eight hundred, that represents a process on the project, I'll walk you through this. Contractor sees something that he doesn't think is right, or doesn't think the numbers are, something on the drawing doesn't match though. He submits a formal question called a request for information in status. I see a conflict in this elevation, or I see a place where a piece of lintel or something doesn't fit in. What should I do? These folks get it, they look at it, they issue a response, say, any of these reading always gotta do it. Normal sort of process is. At the start of the job, you get several of them, then they take more. Currently, I don't think we have a single open RFI, okay? We haven't had, we've been doing them with a single RFI here or there every couple of weeks. So we're not getting a lot of questions about things that we might have to adjust and make some price adjustment on or fix, right? So just, that does paper off. It, it'll pick up a little bit more when we get up into the actual building. Putting on, you know, interior walls and cabinets and things like that, but, um, in my experience, we're over the big items. Okay, we've approved all these foot lanes, moved all the pipe, we've got through all the concrete, we'll pour the concrete. It's tough. You should say, uh, you wanna pour the concrete correctly, so you never have to come back and take some of it out and fit something in. So the fact that we've got, you know, we probably had twenty-five, fifteen or twenty-five questions of conflict. Like there was a picture of a big round hole, you know? All those little connections, those have all been cross-checked by the contractor. Through the RFI process, it resolved.
So Steve, I can interrupt you for one second. I, I think the question Andrew wanna know is just number wise, where we are, um, the percentage of change orders to date. Where we are going in the future. I just look at my phone because I know. I just looked at my phone because I know you have been said to me before, I thought I could spit the numbers out.
I'll look for Rob. So point, if this gets approved, we're at a total of point eight percent change orders. And it's a fairly complex technically project, but this will bring us to point eight percent, and we're about thirty percent of the way through the project overall. And the contingency amount remaining, again, if this is approved, would be two point four five million.
Chairman, can I revisit the three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollar change order for a question? So if it's the interpretation that we didn't think we needed drains because we were concerned about trucks, what other usage would these drains be for? Would it be because of a spill? Are we, what are we storing in the garage that would require drains?
Well, can I add on to that?
Sure.
A similar question. Take the money out, in twenty years with this, would you rather have a water supply that has these? What are the advantages and disadvantages to this? If we just take-
It's a lot of, yeah, like both different ways.
What do we get? Not like a line.
So I think it comes down, it's simply a disagreement of the code between our folks and the town's building inspector. When I read the code, it says, I will get back to you in a minute. When I read the code, what's very clear to me is if you have storage in the garage where there's any sort of vehicular access, you need a tight tank or an interceptor if you're going to send it to a sewer, if you're not sending anything. There's no sewer in this area, so we're talking about a tight tank. With vehicles not being stored or washed or maintained in that facility, I'm not really sure what we're trying to capture. I do agree that if you're going to have a floor drain in an area like this, or right next to the surface water supply, you want to contain that. So you don't want any possibility of any sort of contamination regardless of what's there now or in the future. Clearly, you don't want that getting into the environment and the watershed.
So then they put the tight tank and they dump the condage into the sewer treatment plant?
No, they would likely haul that offsite. A third party disposal firm would be hired to come in and-
Okay, it goes away?
And bring it away, yeah.
Yes.
They would bring it somewhere, and then maybe some testing.
So there, but there is, there's an, because if, when we turn this thing on, it's going to be on for fifty years. Sixty, seventy years. So in thirty years, someone might go in there and all that time and wash a car or move a truck or something. So there are some fundamental benefits if in thirty years the law looks different. Again, I'm trying to get exactly, you know, I understand interpretation. I also don't want to just save money because, well-
If the usage changes in the next, you know, thirty to fifty to sixty years, then there may be an instance where a floor drain would be required. Be when I get.
Did I jump on your question?
No, just a different way to ask it.
Okay.
No. I'll stop that.
Thank you. So I guess my question would be slightly similar, but maybe I asked my previous question poorly. If one option was to rip up a bunch of concrete, which is going to be very expensive, and would have been a waste of a lot of money, I completely understand that. But just in terms of sort of hypothetical questions, if you had a drain inside the garage with a tight tank versus outside the garage, outside the structure, unless I'm misunderstanding, it's outside of the roof versus inside the roof.
So it's actually, I got it. So when you pull in, when it comes through the driveway and then goes into the garage, those trench drains are right down quite similar to the tunnels you see in Boston. They've got those trench drain systems that go in. So instead of the trench drain being in the middle of the floor, and the floor slopes down naturally to the loft there, and disposed in the road, the trench drain picks up all that water and puts it in the tight tank.
But it's not collecting, it's being designed not to collect a lot of rain.
It doesn't collect drain water, it's just for the water that's picked up with the trench drain. It's separated, so it's not going to get filled up every rainstorm.
Okay. It was actually, it's actually overhead that sticks up.
That was my major question. I'm being a tight tank full of rainwater all the time. Thank you.
I'm trying to drop here, can also, you don't give too much information.
I don't say don't give too much information, I just say don't talk to Rob about this.
So if the drains have been put in inside the building the first time, going to the tight tank, you would hardly ever get an indication that the tank has to be pumped up. And that would occur if somebody spilled something inside that space, which in case you do it, you wouldn't do it. Where these drains are sitting outside, at the point where there's an indication that the level has come up, somebody's going to take a sample of what's in there, unless somebody spilled something that's just rainwater and will get treated as rainwater. Okay? So this system is ultimately protecting, over a fifty years period, that somebody really gas can, drops it on the floor, and then somebody is-
We don't want to-
We don't want to run down the drain, that's where it's going.
So then back to Andrew's question about overall budget percentages. And again, I think you sort of answered it, but I just wanted to clarify. And I'm sorry, I'm new to this detailed project. On the whole project's budget, we had an initial budget, and I'm assuming, I'm assuming when you're talking about contingencies, we put into the budget a concept of change orders and ballmarks. With all of the current change orders combined, including the original six and the new forty-three total, how much of the total contingency that we originally built into overages have we eaten if we approved this number?
Zero point eight percent. I don't know, dollar wise.
That's your, your total.
You got the numbers.
Is the total, yeah.
But how much did we originally approve for?
The original contingency was two point nine change. And you'll have two point four change left over.
Thank you.
Right, yeah.
Appreciate it. Just, I don't know, the labels, but the conversation about in the future, the building, Kevin and I met with the plumbing inspector. There's no faster way for me to know before a judge can tell the building plumbing inspector what to do. He felt strongly, it was cold, and he looked at Kevin, he said, look, I know you're not going to wash trucks in there. I know Eric's not going to wash trucks in there, but you're not going to be here for Eric. Eric's not going to be here for Eric, we need to take plans of what's going to happen in the future. And he thinks it's cold, and he said, we still have, we weren't know what's going to happen when someone comes down. Then we should start washing the trucks. Then you got to pay to hear a lot of those.
Yeah, I just, I got to, and I do want to make a statement on the contingency. So I know we have a contingency, but the goal is not to spend the contingency. And when I hear, when you all come to us, and this is the second presentation we've had, and the second fantastic best is for money. So we haven't had a conversation where you haven't been asking us for money. And when I think about contingency, I think about like cost increases or unexpected, not something when someone says missed in design, missed in design. And it's like, we shouldn't be spending contingency when things are missed in design. And I actually would like to thank the situated plumbing inspector, I don't know who it is, but it makes sense to have a drainage system next to your town's water supply in case some sort, some, something happens in the future. So I do think it makes sense. I think it's incredibly unfortunate that it was missed in design. And I hope that in the future, we are having conversations where you're presenting to us without change orders and without things that are missed in design. So to me, it's frustrating, but it is, it's necessary for us to do it. It's my position.
Next slide.
This is just closing it out with our communication channels. So I wanted to make sure, we've shared this before, but then we've been, excuse me, updating with our monthly progress meetings. But for those who haven't seen it, so daily we do have a project representative that's onsite, that's overseeing all of the work that's being completed by the contractor. And they're, you know, taking the notes and ensuring that the work that's being completed is in accordance with our plans and specifications. We also have erosion control measure inspections, make sure that any of the stormwater is not leaving the site, that it's all being collected and addressed on the site. Then we have weekly, the contractor provides us a three week look ahead schedule. So I believe you should be receiving a copy of that. If you need one, please let me know, and I will add, go onto the list. We also do the construction general permit, site inspection related to the erosion controls. We have an onsite meeting that Kevin is at with Eric and Jim and others from the town, and then Sean as well, and OPM, design engineer and contractors. We do that weekly onsite. And then we also have a weekly construction hosting that goes to the town. So the focus there is more communication, more opportunity to catch if there are any, you know, questions or issues. We get ahead of it, we make the problem smaller, not bigger. And then monthly, we have our progress meeting. So our last meeting we just had last week on the fifth, and this was provided before we decided we're moving the meeting to July tenth. Not that there, fourth of July, that will probably be impacted people scheduled there. So we're moving that meeting to the tenth. And then we also get an updated project schedule with each of our payment applications. All right.
Yeah, we got another question.
I have one question. Is there anything else on your mind that you think you will be coming to us in the very near future for another change order with dollars attached?
It's not on the radio screen right now, but I can't guarantee that this is going to-
No, I'm just, I want to know, I want to know when you know it's going to happen.
With no RFI's pending, there's nothing.
Okay, great.
To the new members, if you want to go to have a talk, Friday meetings, you still have your own advanced, because we're going to get your hard hats and vests and everything. Just let us know if you want to go take the tour, we'll do it right after the Friday. That's fine.
Any questions for the time? We have folks in the Water Resources Committee who- or whoever's sorry. My only question was going to be Bruce Arby, twenty-three Gannett一條. In terms of the contingency, my only question was going to be, there's a stormwater capture process for the cap on site. Is that process efficient to capture and contain sufficiently whatever might come out of the garage? Um, I'll take that one, I make sure I understand your question. So the, so there's a drain that we put in specifically to address the concern of the plumbing inspector?
Yes.
So my question is related to that. If it got past that, for example, and it got into the regular stormwater capture process on site, is that process efficient to capture and contain the same kind of material that might come out of the garage?
It is, yes. And we did extensive hydraulic modeling to make sure that we made, that there's no additional runoff off the site, regardless of rain event, and that the tight tank would overflow, which if alarmed, it would be captured by that system. Okay?
All right. So one more thing, when the reservoirs were plus eleven, Eric and I would talk, saying we wish the new plant was online, because we could have captured that water, shut the wells off, given them charge, had to recharge. You know, we're at plus right now, the water is, we can't capture it. Can't just process it off, so it'll be great twenty, twenty-seven.
Five hundred and sixty-four days. Countdown is on.
Correct. Yeah, wait, there's a reason. Mr. Goodrich will be standing there on that day, saying, are you ready?
Ready, you ready?
All right.
All right. For the Saturday basis, so. We'll move on or etc. Do you need to take a vote on that?
Most of the change orders have been entered.
There is my motion.
I don't have it, it's not your backup.
You can make one.
Yeah, I just move through, approve change orders as expected.
If you don't want the dollars on there?
If you like.
Move to approve change order number two, additional garage floor drain and containment system for three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Move to approve electrical structural steel modification of one ten, one hundred and ten thousand. And move to approve RFI certifications for thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Harrison, second by?
Second.
Mr. Gilmore, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't stand you. You guys have had our presentation number two. I mean, again, obviously not just for everyone. Again, folks at home, and sewer is coming to North City. We will have sewer. The hat.
All good news. So just before they start the presentation, we have started our next phase, INI. We're getting ready for the trucks out in the near future. We were on Huey Road for the past couple of days. We've been digging up some sewer lines that were crushed and leaking significantly and making repairs. They replaced some sections yesterday that were down about nine feet. And then today, they're replacing some other sections on Huey Road where it ties into the manhole. We're moving a lot of INI. So all that INI helps us make capacity so that we can do no situated follow-up proofing and plating. So people see the trucks around town and all that work, that's going to help us get to this. So just from that, that's where I'm at. All right.
I'll take it away. So again, if you just tuned in, I'll rob a little printable and charge for the no situated sewer expansion project and with Woodard and Current, and I have another person, they'd like to introduce himself, the sport, I think, maybe the first time in this room.
So. Good evening, my name is Dan Scott, I'm the project manager on this project. I'm here tonight to give you an update on approximately only us five months with my team. The project is to bring sewer to North City around Gannett Road and Countryway, near the MBTA train station. The parcels highlighted in green are the parcels to be sewered by this proposed project. It includes three thousand linear feet of gravity sewer, three thousand linear feet of low pressure sewer, and about two miles of force main that are going to come from a proposed off station. Next slide please. So we're in the preliminary design phase right now. We've done mainly four tasks to date. The first is establishment of existing conditions. So we've done geotechnical borings in the North City area. We've done topographic survey to get contour information and confirm existing utilities. We've done inspection of the dry sewer that was laid of the train tracks adjacent to the train stop. And we have reviewed all the record drawings and data provided by the town. The last thing is coordination with private developers throughout that area to understand the proposed flows from those developments and coordinate our design with that. The second task we've completed is a hydraulic model. This is for the existing sewer system, including the pipes and pump stations and force mains. This was an important step for us today to understand how much flow can be taken through different locations within the filtration system, and what the impacts might be in order to accept those flows, so upgrades to pump stations, force mains, and gravity sewer. So that step led us into our next task of downstream conveyance alternatives analysis. We use that hydraulic model to figure out the best places to tie the new force main into, both by proximity to the North City area and where the capacity would lay without having to do significant upgrades. The final task that's still ongoing is preliminary design activities, including our PDR report, preliminary design report, which I'll talk a little bit more in the next slide. So the report I was just speaking to is going to summarize the existing conditions that we've obtained and reviewed. We'll also talk through permitting requirements for construction and to be done during design. We're going to establish our design criteria so we have a clear path forward for final design. We're also going to evaluate the pump station site and layout of that pump station and get some basic understandings of the hydraulics of the station. And then we're also going to be reviewing potential funding opportunities to move this project through construction. And then the last step is going to be doing existing conditions of the downstream conveyance route. So here's a summary of our alternatives analysis that we've concluded over the last four months. We looked at five total alternatives. The first A is Gannett Road. That is a force main going along Gannett Road up towards the coast to the northeast. That alternative passes through three pump stations downstream and the force mains and additional gravity sewer. The next three- The next three are alternatives that begin on Countryway and deviate on various paths. The first is the red line, which is B1, Countryway to Branch. That travels down Countryway, down to Branch, and ties into the existing gravity sewer, so no pump stations or force mains strictly gravity. B2 is the orange line, which extends down Countryway down to Al. That passes through two pump stations and their force mains and the gravity sewer down to the plant. And then the third alternative along Countryway is Hollitt Street. So we go down Countryway once again and then turn sharply beneath the train tracks onto Hollitt Street. And similar to alternative A, we have three pump stations to get through the existing force mains and gravity sewer. And last but not least, we have alternative C, yellow line, which is alignment down beneath the existing MBTA train tracks. There were some dry pipes installed during the installation of those train tracks, which will be repurposed to some capacity with new pipes to the existing. Next slide please. So once we established our various alternatives, all five of those, we did both qualitative and quantitative analysis of those alternatives. So under the qualitative analysis, we looked at five different criteria. The first was environmental considerations. We also looked at community disruption, construction risks, design and construction permitting, and then future maintenance challenges. These criteria were determined by the team to be most important to be evaluated and meaningful to deciding the best alternative. We scored them on three different measures, low, medium, and high. Where low is the most desirable, and then as you go to medium, the highest, less desirable. So a low score is a good score in this instance on the qualitative analysis. B1, Countryway to Branch is the best scoring on those metrics. Then we also did the quantitative analysis. This was assessed both by capital costs and lifecycle costs. So capital cost being the cost to construct the infrastructure and then lifecycle cost would be the long-term maintenance and operation of that infrastructure through its design life. Based on that analysis, we determined B1, Countryway to Branch to also be the best performing alternative. Next slide please. So in summary, we selected as a team alternative B1, Countryway to Branch as our recommended alternative to move forward with through final design. As I mentioned on the last slide, it performed best on both the qualitative and quantitative analysis we performed. Our next steps for proceeding with that alternative is to start establishing our existing conditions by forming our geotechnical investigations to understand subsurface conditions in order to design the sewer and then supporting survey to get the contour and utility information. And then our plan is to do the wetland flagging all in one, well, sweep the whole project area for efficiencies. I'm gonna close this presentation with a update on our project schedule. So this is through the end of construction. So we're looking at wrapping up our preliminary design this July. And then also starting our additional, additional existing conditions of what I mentioned on the last slide with the wetland flagging survey to geotech. And then 90% design, that will start once we finish our preliminary design and it will be completed between July 2025 and January 2026. We'll also be completing permitting improvements. That will be between September 2025 and April 26. 100% design will begin in January 26 and conclude in May of 2026. Once we finish 100% sign, we'll be ready to move into bidding award of the contract. That's slated for September 26 through October of 26. And then we have construction startup of the system. That's anticipated to be about a 20-month construction duration. Starting in November of 2026 and concluding in June of 2028. One additional item will be final paving, which we have planned for the spring of 2025.
Excellent. And the permitting, I mean, that's shorter than I've seen previously. Looking at only eight months, we're pretty comfortable with that timeline for getting all these different permits. Obviously, not to the MBTA. They'll speed things up, but.
Yeah, I think the big permit is the no situate. Which generally takes a month or two to pull together and another month to get on the agenda.
Right, sure.
And then maybe.
What, we haven't seen them yet?
One of the other things we have is we have to have our close downs, the permit from the DEP to go to that next step. And that's, like I said, that's one of the people working across the.
You will.
Can't we ask, can't we ask for a waiver?
Do I understand that B1 is the optimal option? Even just looking personally, doesn't know anything about it, looks logical. Is it better that we have no pump stations involved in this?
Yes, there's always need for upgrades in order to.
So that means our, probably the, the cost to do this should be a little bit less than pump stations.
Does, does the pump station included with the, the North City area that's necessary, but less downstream, you know, logically, yeah, absolutely, less rehab work.
I'm glad, I'm glad my logic is consistently yours. And the logic's right on, and when we discussed it and decided the route internally, our other question was if we did, if we did add the extra pump station, so it could be an additional operator in future sewer department that has to go out and check that seven days a week, twice, twice a day. To make sure that it's there. So it stays on manpower also.
That's what I should, well known. Thank you.
No, it's exciting. Very exciting. I am a little concerned why we're going through the harbor. One of those routes was not going through the harbor and one of them was.
I can answer that one. The harbor is home to a major sewer interceptor for the town of City. The vast majority of the town's sewage passes through this interceptor. Most of the conveyance routes for our collection system utilize this interceptor.
I think that's a typo in the second row there. Scroll over. Goes through Front Street, City, no, right above that, B1 is the.
B1 is.
B1, it does not go through Front Street, City Harbor.
It does not go. It does?
The red.
Yeah, it does, it does, it, it does hit the end of Front Street. It doesn't go through the cultural district part, but it does hit, what, First Parish.
Yeah.
Like Brook, Brook Street and Front Street would be right near it.
That's existing infrastructure.
And there's no risk for like a water intrusion or something at that part?
There's, there's always a risk for water intrusion. That's, that's why our infill infiltration projects are, are so critical, the rest is to keep that infiltration out.
And you remember years ago, Mother's Day, I wanna say 20 years ago, Brook flooded and the old North City flooded out of the left back. It was probably about 20 years ago, flooded all the way up the Gannet Road.
So I have a similar question, which I, I thought was maybe logic based, but when we had, when we see the notes in column B there, you talk about whether it goes through or does not go through. It seems to be one of your major notes. That was a question I had, but just not knowing enough about the topic. Is, is there a factor of going through Front Street that increases, decreases risk inherently? Or why would that be important note that it does or doesn't go there?
You know what I'm saying? The young outside, I'll let you guys know.
I can answer tangentially. The pump stations would be my major concern. In order to utilize, like Route A, for example, we would need to use the Sand Hills pump station as one of the three pump stations that we could utilize. That pump station does suffer from a lot of climate impacts, a lot of flooding events. The maintenance to maintain that station with additional flows would be very challenging for us. So finding a route that does is, Daisy Chain Pump Stations was both a priority for our department in that it saves on electrical and operation costs. We only have to pump it once, as opposed to pumping it three or four times. And then you don't have to essentially make already vulnerable infrastructure more. Yeah.
The, the gravity makes perfect sense to me, and I had asked Mr. Goodrich about that earlier, and so that all 100% seems very logical. I just was wondering why even no situate included anything about the Front Street area if it wasn't important to risk tolerance. Maybe the answer is.
It's really not that important. That's why I didn't.
That's okay.
I think for them, when they were doing their engineering thing, one of the things that the engineer was probably thinking of is they're gonna have to evaluate that the entire way down to the stream. So they were thinking of doing the evaluation of the interceptor on Front Street that they would have to get into the manholes, I think the manholes get blind to the evaluation.
It's, it's slow.
Where, where they avoid it, going the other way, you know, that, that could be a process.
I think it's just kinda tell you this is where it's gone, just so you have a better idea for the actual.
I have one other question. You mentioned next steps. You talked about anticipated, what was it? Next up is the additional geotechnical investigation that'll happen next. Is there any significant, I know there's always risk, is there any significant risk in your mind that when you're doing your additional geotechnical investigations, that you're gonna find something that's gonna derail us to a different alternative?
I'll jump on that. So one of the big things, you do the geodeck underground investigation. If we hit all rock in, in certain areas, and then you have to blast 1,000 feet of rock if you're in there. We don't see that happening. There's already utilities in there. We don't see it going that deep and see that an issue, but we're still gonna drill those areas. We didn't drill everything because we'd spend a fortune on doing geotechnical work. Once we figure the area out, we'll do detailed drilling in there, and if we're gonna hit a lot of rock, that could drive up the cost and have a small amount of rough. I don't see that happening, but that's, that's the biggest, you know, question we have. Because rock gets expensive to break out, to get sewer in, especially with gravity.
Now, given that it's a force main, we're not as likely as they do go commonly as you are with a gravity main. So to Kevin's point, there's other utilities there, so we, there's, we're hopeful that there's not a ton of rock.
Yeah, we're open here. So you're open up. Ann and Bruce, go ahead.
Is any thought been given to extending the sewer to the co-cass line from City Lake? Because once upon a time, when a train was being built, it was supposed to be a pipe underbound Brook for sewer. And suddenly, somehow, that never happened. And that's truly, truly unfortunate.
I think the service line will go down, have to loop up around Water Calin, right?
Right.
Talked about. This is the actual force main going back to.
Okay, so Water Calin will be.
Water Calin is on the plan, particularly for Water Calin, it's on the plan. The business district level plan, it kind of loops up, County Way around Water Calin, catching that over there.
I, I believe there was a sleeve placed underneath the tracks. It might have been a 20-inch steel sleeve. And the problem is we have to find that and locate that. The struggles we got from the MBTA weren't the greatest. The biggest issue I think we have is the overnut combination matrix going underneath Bound Brook. So there wasn't something set up to that. So one of the challenges with the engineers is how to get around, and he ran it around Water Calin.
Would you have to add a pump station to get it up for Water Calin and move that down?
Don't think so, but that'll come up further in the design. Did I say anything? I'll face Dan to speak up if I did. I don't mind if you do.
Bruce?
Yeah, I just wanna comment about the capacity concerns. I know you're doing INI work to reduce the amount of entry. But my understanding is the sewer plant is restrained in this capacity by the amount of water we can pump into what we're. And to the extent that we can deflect some of that water, that gives you an ability that as you have free card, to meet the requirements for the next city. So there is a state reg, 314 CMR 20. Coverage clean water, water coming out of the sewer plant can be distributed into an apple fur recharge area. Power pipelines, where it was this, it's a zone two area, so where some of the wells are. So if we get to the point where there's a critical decision that needs to be made, and you need another 10,000 or 15,000 gallons to go someplace. This is a potential option to solve that problem. Taking water from the treated water from, from the sewer and moving it to could be across to the golf course, well 8 to B, wells nine and 10, that's an area as well, that you could dump water into. As an option, that's for sure.
Oh, Kevin, it's a possibility. I know we had discussed it in past years, I think, when Becky was on the Water Resources Commission, just discussing it. She gave us to get out of your free cards, you know, some flipper. So that, yeah, it, great, great pickup. You know, we, we spoke about it with a, with a prior board and, you know, anytime you dump sewage waste, a lot of people get concerned about it. It's not something we approached immediately, but it's something that we would look at alternatives and present to the board if we're gonna do that at that time.
All right, is that, you seen any other communities, thoughts, concerns, if you're like, oh, that's, we've done it, that's issues, that's, no, haven't, haven't done it, not, not annoying.
We talked about the past two, you say, treated storage water on the golf course. That's also something that we don't see in New England. If we really expect, that's another option.
We'd have to update the plant just to use a fabrication. A significant upgrade.
The board's gonna remember, the big pickup we're gonna get on INI is actually the new water treatment plant.
Right.
Which is 40,000 to 50,000 gallons of waste of the water treatment plant is currently putting into the sewer system. So that's about halfway to what we need for North City.
That's the big pickup. You have a question? Yes.
Benny Mallett, 100% right, just, I guess I have a question about that. The top line might not matter. If this construction is gonna start, sorry, in November 2026, is it the, for a given plant 2027?
The financial completion is 2026, and that's why they hold the up.
So that's. Oh, that's, yeah.
So. I'd like to be ahead of schedule.
Well, I guess it's worth just, I think, sorry, if we're relying on 50% of that capacity from the water treatment plant, there needs to be some thought around if those guidelines don't match up.
And our goal with our aggressive INI is to, is to get it down lower, you know, to get it as low as we can, and that's why we're, we're being so aggressive.
All right. Thank you. I hope you realize, I hope the developers and folks you talk to are very receptive. This town has been wanting this project for a very, very long time. It's really Santa Claus buying these votes. Can't wait. And I know anyone who worked with Eric and folks who live and work around North City. Just, you know, any problems or issues, please let us know. Again, the whole community is, can't wait for this, go for it. So thank you.
Corey, Corey Miles has filed a master grant for $5 million on this, like a bottle about two weeks ago. Might be a little early on it, but I think in the end, he checked almost every single box they have for that money.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Everybody.
All right. So Will, you're still here, and Gavin here's still here, next to you. All right. So next on the agenda, you go, we're a couple minutes behind. This is the some days data, some days scada, 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 upgrade on the sewer clarifiers, Western and Sampson contracts.
Sure. Western and Sampson's our skating contractor. They've been doing several phase upgrades in our status system for the last decade or so. This would be a series of upgrades to our secondary clarifier.
This would be a series of upgrades to our secondary clarifiers. They're the circular tanks about in the middle of the yard of the wastewater plant. These clarifiers have levels of sludge in the bottom, and clear water runs off the top. These devices would be installed to monitor the sludge level in each clarifier independently and report that to our skating system. It would also provide us with alarms so that we could be proactive as opposed to reactive to throttle to volume sludge overflow, as those are relatively difficult to deal with at the time.
Real-time data. Questions?
Yes, are all three tanks in good functioning working order?
They are. We recently reconstructed one with the main bearing assembly, and they've all been operated very sense.
And Will takes them offline in the summer, and there's that old guy's down there painting them, spraying them, playing with them. We're going to be online. And like I said, for the board, anytime anybody wants to go for a very exciting tour.
We should do that.
I'm sure.
Really, it's fascinating.
I love the sewer treatment.
It's got the cleanest wire in the whole water. Really?
Go fresh water.
Yeah.
You know, if we reach out to them, we can set it up and.
It's probably the first time Will said, I love the source.
That gets a lot of love.
It is. It's fascinating.
Do I take it from what you're saying that we currently don't have, we have not had a lot of known those things prior to this?
That is correct. The way that we're alerted to the sludge overflow is when the downstream filters have a high level. By the time it's at the sand filters, it's very difficult for us to take corrective action.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there are still elements of what we're trying to, what we were talking four members ago, for some of the scada, scada, scada systems, all this real-time data. Nothing. So we're trying to slowly get there and all of this.
Not that long ago, we were running on Windows 2000.
Right now, so we're getting up.
Well, we did have the scada had almost no security, and people couldn't log on to our system. So we spent a lot of time. Will's done a great job with Mike Machello, IT, helping to be a lot of.
This is a good move.
I'll take, unless I see any questions, motion.
Move that the select board award the contract 25 SS 32 for scada upgrades on sewer clarifiers to Weston Sampson, the amount of $70,600.
Second.
This is the movement for Gilmore, said by Schleyhold.
All day.
Bye. unanimous.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
And easement, Mass Electric.
This is Nancy, I mean. Well, yes. Very simply, this is the new Quikly Alley School project. It's easy to feel like a family to bring in the three space, three, eight, some power. It goes across the street, and although a pole underground, they run up to the.
Questions? Oh, we're on page 77.
78, it's a picture.
This is the one I personally have.
If you want a picture, the school should have electricity.
So they have a scheduled time to bid at the end of this month, beginning of July.
We want a lot of them to bring from the pole to the school.
Just the project scheduled above the bid, end of this month, beginning of July, groundbreaking sometime in August.
All right. By the way, it's good. Motion, please.
Move to grant an easement for the installation of above-ground and below-ground equipment on End Final Road for Quikly Alley School.
Mr. Gilmore, second and five.
Thank you.
Harrison. All in favor? Bye. It's unanimous. Beach bathrooms.
Just Egypt. Just Egypt, nothing in your package. You've seen the trailer down there.
Yeah.
I got it, probably wants to place we just checking out. It really hasn't had a whole lot of use yet. But speaking with Dick from Recreation and Chief Thompson, there's some concern right now that the bathroom is open 24 hours a day. It'll be an attractive nuisance in the summertime when the beach picks up. So we're proposing, unless the boards are otherwise, the lifeguards will unlock. Bathroom at 10 o'clock in the morning, and they come on. I originally thought that the lifeguards would lock it up. She'll correctly point it out to me. There's people around the beach way later than 5 o'clock. So I went and saw her idea, went and saw Steve down at the Harvard Masters office and said, you get a bunch of guys here in the afternoon, at night, so the Harvard Masters office sometime around 8:00, 8:30, we'll be on the block. Check it, make sure it's all set, and then lock it up.
I hooked my head in the other day. It was very, it was like unused, but I don't think we've had enough beach days that people are going in.
So again, tomorrow, Thursday is supposed to be a nice day. The seniors are out of school. It might start getting a little more used again. Once everybody's out of school, I get a lot of school. We got to say, that's the big question. Can the company keep cleaning work, both doing?
This is a real test of the social contract. This is John Locke. Can we have a rest?
We can. If we lock them at night.
But we all know we've got.
We could do it if we just lock that.
For this nice one to not have an open 24/7.
I'm locking it, not you. Lock it.
I mean, it does not cost them too many, I mean, the sense of, I mean, they're locked.
So they're not doing it anyways. We'll send them over to the Maritime Center, check that out at night, so just take the key down, make sure no one's in there, and lock it. Recreation will make up signs, they put the signs on, you know, get 10 to 8.
Yeah.
So yeah, we get a lot of pushback. If you do it until 9, we can deal with that. There's still a lot of hope until 10, a lot of time.
Same here. I don't know how much you do. All right, so we're in great, perfect. Let's accept this wonderful, Jim's also about this wonderful donation.
It's a donation, $8,220. Came from 35 donors in memory of Ann Mullin. Ann was an active member in the community, volunteer at the senior center for a while that I can remember. Everybody made donations in her memory, and this is to accept that on behalf of the senior center.
Fantastic, wonderful, everyone got together to donate in her memory.
I was lucky enough to know Ann. She was an amazing person. She was an excellent citizen of Sichuan. She was an active volunteer in so many ways. She's just a, she's a spitfire person. She missed my a lot of people to do themselves. But a lot of the family and her friends are able to do something, so they made her this way. So it's really special.
It is, yes. I think it's super special. Gone too soon and very quickly. I didn't get to know, I didn't know her, but I heard she's my son, it's really their mom's grandma, so she will be missed. Can't even say it, but it was great that folks got together, because I know how much it loves us. We appreciate that.
Take a motion.
Motion to accept the $8,120 donation donated in memory of Ann Mullin. Will the senior center receive to date further to accept any subsequent donations in her memory?
Gilmore, second and five.
Second.
Second go.
You almost said back at me.
All in favor?
Hi.
It is unanimous. We've already done the four committees that we can. None of you have liaised. We'll have to go over.
I have a liaison of a.
Oh, you have, yeah, they don't.
Oh, I just want to say how the opening of the harbor was a huge success. What, what was helping, also, I remember my parents, it was such a huge success, and everyone wants to do it again, but I. It was amazing, it was amazing.
It's awesome.
The boats, there were lines for looking at it, for walking through every boat. Look, they had all the boats in the harbor, I went to the police show, armed, a little.
Awesome.
Fireman, the police, there were like lines to get on the boats.
Police boat.
There was, no, marshmallows, police boat, because our police boat is on the, on the harbor getting fixed.
Coming by warranty.
It's under warranty. It's a smaller, without a problem, smaller on. But anyway, I thought it was amazing. There's so many, like, young faces there.
Let's do it again.
We can do a closing on the harbor.
We can do it.
Closing on the harbor.
We could. Anyway, it was just such a great event, and I think it's also an opportunity they can do, there were many other events.
Even though it was on graduation, I know it was still very, very loud.
Yeah, it was different, like a different crowd. Anyway, that's my report. They did an awesome job.
My, I'll do a general report. Just that the Irish Sister, West Court Sister City Committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:00 PM in senior centers. They really like to attend, it's somewhat lively.
My only report is purification, they need more young people to haul some mulch. This is mulching season, weeding season, so they need some more volunteers. Feel free to contact, it's all on the website, purification, but especially if you're, actually, we need some of those volunteers.
We have such a hard time getting
Yeah.
young kids out at the fields to haul molten.
It's.
It's, they don't want to work.
It's tough.
They don't.
It's, well, they're missing out on some really.
They don't want to work. They don't want to take that role. They want. They're going to wander.
All right. Meeting minutes?
There are no minutes at last time.
So I take a motion.
No correspondence.
No correspondence? Unless there's anything else.
Are we going to have a sign or?
We did.
We put it on the agenda though.
Okay.
I think you guys can call it.
Narrator. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Gilmore, second and five.
Second.
All in favor? Bye. It's unanimous.